They do, yeah.
Would the meeting come to order, please? Thank you. Adequate notice of this regular and executive meeting, setting forth time, date, and location, has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act on January 10, 2022 by prominently posting a copy on the bulletin board in the lobby of the offices of the Board of Education, which is a public place reserved for such announcements, transmitting a copy of this notice to the record, the Wayne Today, tap into Wayne.net, the municipal clerk, and post it on the district website. Roll call, please, Mrs. Sladek.
Mr. Bubba?
Here.
Mr. Fatale?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
Mr. Persakis?
Present.
Mrs. Putup?
Here.
Mrs. Wundick?
Here.
The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of February 24, 2022 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Nellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. We're going to have the flag salute, please, and followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. It is my pleasure, along with my fellow board members, to have our administration bestow upon our teachers and educational support staff the Governor's Educator of the Year awards. Thank you. Dr. Toback? Mrs. Leishman?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thrilled to see a full room because it's a super important night. We're celebrating our teachers. Tonight, we have our Governor's Educator of the Year program. We were strategically late tonight, I said to Dr. Toback, because we wanted to give you an opportunity to enjoy the presentation. Our teacher technology coordinator, Tracy Lee, put this together, and it will be available on our website tomorrow and for the indefinite future for you to enjoy. The Governor's Educator of the Year program is designed to highlight educational innovation, student achievement, the rewards of teaching, and the importance of services outside the classroom environment that lead to student success. This celebratory program integrates the Teacher of the Year program and the Governor's Teacher Educational Services Professional Recognition Program to continue to recognize our state's best teachers and educational service professionals. Tonight, we are here to recognize one teacher and one educational service professional from each of our 15 schools. Before inviting each up to receive their certificate, I would like to congratulate all of our winners for their commitment and dedication to our students and school community. It's truly an honor to be here tonight to congratulate you all on the outstanding work you do each and every day to support our students and educational programs. Let's give everybody a round of applause. This has been an exceptionally difficult year for our teachers, a very difficult three years. So I am truly grateful to all of our staff. I think that each of them has emerged as a winner in this process. I also, in addition to recognizing the winners, want to give an additional recognition to three staff members who decided to move on in the program to be considered for the County Teacher Year of the Award. County Teacher of the Year Award. Sorry, that was a mouthful. This opportunity was extended to teachers who won the School Governor's Educator of the Year award and required the completion and submission of a very comprehensive application process, inclusive of many essays to detail professional background, teaching style, exemplary lessons, and leadership vision. I requested an opportunity to read through their submissions and was truly wowed by the information that these three staff members shared. Here's a few things that I learned. Mr. Edward Essie, where are you? Hello. Congratulations. You deserve all the accolades. Mr. Essie shared a very touching story about his mom serving as an inspiration to become a teacher. Mr. Essie's mother went back to school to fulfill her dream of becoming a teacher when he was in middle school. He watched how her career changed, brought her great happiness, and realized at a very young age that teaching was something he wanted to pursue as a career path. Mr. Essie grew up in Wayne and is now teaching at the elementary school he attended as a child. I love that. He has made significant contributions to our standing vocal music program, and we are very appreciative for all you do. Congratulations. Ms. Stephanie Ziggman, where are you? Hi, Stephanie. Congrats, Stephanie. I loved learning about your career path and the inspiration behind your achievement of two degrees, one in physical education and a master's degree in special education. You have a breadth of experience working with children and adults of various ages, and your passion for sports and working with children further contribute to what makes you stand out as a superior educator. In your essay, you noted that you found a career that incorporated all of your favorite things: sports and activities, working with children, and collaborating with people. You noted that your greatest contribution to our schools is the positivity you bring to every situation. You used the pandemic as a time to reinvent some of your curricular activities to best meet the current needs of our students. You truly make APT school a better place. Congratulations, and thank you for all you do. Ms. Christina Camano, where are you? Christina, you shared your story about your high school science teacher, Mr. Park, who inspired your love for learning science. Ms. Camano said that Mr. Park's enthusiasm was infectious, and he motivated his students to care about learning. She looked forward to his class every day, and he sparked her desire to become an educator. Ms. Camano says that the most rewarding aspect of being an educator is making a positive and lasting impact on her students. She evidenced her success when she was included in a college magazine article by a former student who credited her for the success she achieved as a journalist in college. Continue to inspire your students each day, Christina. Congratulations. At this time, I would like to invite up Donna Reaver, our Association Vice President. I am going to call up each GEOY Teacher of the Year and Education Services Professional of the Year. I ask that when you come up, you take your certificate. Donna has a flower for you, and then she intends to say a couple of words as well, so please stay up here. And after that, we have another special recognition for another very special staff member. So everyone just hang tight. We are going to start with our Early Childhood Center, and I would like to congratulate teacher Christine Romanek. And I'd also like to welcome up with Education Services Professional Anne Kerpic, paraprofessional. From APT Elementary School, please come up, health and PE teacher Stephanie Ziggman. And another round of applause for Nurse Lisa Silva. From James Fallon Elementary School, congratulations to 4th grade teacher Anna Montgomery. And paraprofessional Kim Biandi. From JFK Elementary School, my former babysitter Jacqueline Rakia.
Thank you so much.
Congrats, Jacqueline. And paraprofessional Corinne Meyer. From Lafayette Elementary School, congratulations to our 1st grade teacher Larissa Rohan. And another round of applause for paraprofessional Nancy Curlicio. From Paconak Elementary School, congratulations to 3rd grade teacher Lauren Dickens. And congratulations to our school counselor at Paconak, Lauren Reska. From Pines Lake Elementary School, I'd like to congratulate instrumental music teacher Pat Merlucci. And congratulations to paraprofessional Rosalyn Weiss. From Randall Carter Elementary School, congratulations to our 5th grade teacher Serge Savsnov. Congrats, Serge. And congratulations to our paraprofessional Bonnie Dwyer. From Ryerson Elementary School, congratulations to our 3rd grade teacher Ashley Conklin. And congratulations from Ryerson paraprofessional Cindy Salerno. From Tunis Dai Elementary School, congrats again, Edward Essie. And another congratulations to Nurse Julia Kelly. From Anthony Wayne Middle School, congratulations to 6th grade ELA teacher Mary Dudek. And congratulations to Anthony W. School Counselor Jeff Rob Johns. From George Washington Middle School, congratulations to our instrumental teacher and band director Nick Vigiletti. And congratulations to GW Media Specialist Tara Cooper Weiss. From Schuyler Colfax Middle School, congratulations to Special Education Teacher Michelle Johnson. And another special congratulations to paraprofessional from Schuyler Colfax, Annabella Cordjorno. From Wayne Hills High School, congratulations to English teacher Christina Camano. And congratulations to the Wayne Hills School Counselor Nicole Sandus. And from Wayne Valley High School, congratulations to science teacher Lauren Allert. And congratulations to Wayne Valley paraprofessional Mina Gachion. I want to invite Ms. Reaver to share a few words, and then I'm going to ask you to all stay put because we have one more recognition. And then we'll get a picture.
Want to do this one up the end?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Donna Reaver, and I am the first vice president. Nice catch, right? To all the phys ed teachers, thank you. No, I'm just kidding. I'm the first vice president of the Wayne Education Association. On behalf of the WEA officers, I would like to congratulate all our Governor's Educator of the Year recipients. In addition to this amazing honor, there is someone else I would like to congratulate in a moment. The Governor's Educator of the Year award is always an honor to receive. However, this year, it seems extra special. The past two years have presented challenge after challenge, both academically and personally. Not only have our educators adapted to a new way of teaching at the drop of a hat, but they have done so all the while giving our students exactly what they need: love, compassion, and support, as well as caring for their own families. We all know the saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." Well, this includes educating one. Every educator in the Wayne schools plays a part in our children's development, from the custodian to the speech and language specialist to the lunch aids, from the preschool teacher to the AP teacher. We all come together to do what is right by our students. And tonight, just some of these amazing educators that we have in Wayne are being honored, and rightfully so. As a fellow educator, I would like to commend all of the honorees tonight for their efforts: for the countless hours spent grading papers, creating bulletin boards, getting your rooms ready, making lesson plans, but most of all, for adapting to the changing landscapes and demands that this pandemic has presented. You, and the educators that you represent, are owed a debt that this community can never truly repay. As a mom, I would like to thank you for treating your students as your kids, for making your students feel valued and safe each and every day, while teaching the curriculum, teaching to the standards, but most importantly, teaching your students to be caring members of the community. We are so proud that you are all a part of our success as Wayne Township Public Schools. There is a reason that Wayne is ranked so highly in the state, and there's a reason that New Jersey public schools are number one again. Together with our administration and the Board of Education, the WEA and your fellow educators would once again like to congratulate you all on receiving such an amazing award here tonight. Be proud of what you do. Don't let anyone take that away from you. The Dalai Lama once said, "When educating the minds of our youth, we must not forget to educate their hearts." Thank you for having heart, teaching with heart, and loving our students. Thank you.
I would also like to invite up one other member of the Wayne community, Stacy Smith. Stacy, where are you? Please come up. Stacy serves as an administrative assistant to the principal at Schuyler Colfax Middle School. Stacy was recently honored with the NJEA Educational Service Professional Career Achievement Award. Congratulations, Stacy. This award is given to an NJEA Education Service Professional Association Advocate who has been employed for a minimum of 10 years in public education. Stacy has been working in the Wayne Township Public Schools for 24 years, and she was nominated by her colleagues to recognize her long-term professional dedication and success in supporting our school community. Congratulations, Stacy, on receiving this very well-deserved award. So at this time, we would like to get our traditional picture, but I think the best way to do this this year, and the safest way, would be to ask you to all convene in the hall. If we could just take a break, we'll let everyone take a picture and then come back in, and if you choose to go home after this and gather your things, we'll take a brief recess. Is that okay? Thank you. It's so good to see you. We'll get your picture.
Okay. The meeting will reconvene at this time. Thank you. Okay. Dr. Toback. Administrative summary report, please.
So I recognize tonight that there's a lot to report on with the committees. And I also know our student rep reports contain a lot of information I would normally report on, so I'm going to forego providing the board with an administrative summary report. I will provide the board, obviously, I'm required to give you the HIB report. So I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying in the Wayne Township Public Schools. There were 16 incidents of HIBs investigated since my last report. Five of those cases were deemed to be actual cases of HIB.
Our student representatives' reports. You can decide which of you wants to go first. Thank you so much, ladies.
Sophia Kim, 11th grade student at Wayne Hills, was crowned the winner of the 12th David D. Dubois Piano Competition at Bowling Green State University. The competition and festival brought 17 semifinalists, including musicians from China and Vietnam, to campus for the event. Congratulations, Sophia. Juliana Steyer, 9th grade, has earned the position of Principal Oboe, First Chair, in the New Jersey Region One Intermediate Concert Band. Great job, Juliana, and thank you for representing Wayne Hills. On Saturday evening, February 19th, the Wayne Hills High School Patriot V, One Win Quintet, under the direction of Steve Sullivan, was excited to perform for the Shriners International Organization Fundraising Dinner. The student members of the group gave selflessly of their time and talent to prepare for the evening and get behind this worthwhile cause. Thank you to the student members of Patriot V, Dorina Yushenko, Sharon Hecht, Matthew Sialletti, Heather Boronau, and Marcus Nieves for an outstanding performance. Well done. Boys basketball. With many close games, the Patriots made it into both county and state tournaments, as well with the corner finals showing in the counties, and are headed to Riverdale for the first round of the state tournament on March 1st. The Wayne Hills competition cheer team has flourished this season with several championship titles, including grand champions. They completed in Wildwood, New Jersey this past weekend and have earned a spot at Nationals in Florida later in March. Boys and girls winter track. With some tremendous personal records this season, the girls' winter track team won the league championship at Ocean Breeze in Staten Island, New York. The boys won both the league and county 4x4 relay and placed third in the North One Group Three sections this past weekend. Kara Langbaum broke the 1,000-meter Wayne Hills school record with a time of 3 minutes and 13 seconds. The state group championship is this weekend with four event finalists, Robert Hughes in the shot put, and Robert Hughes, Hector Garza Jr., Austin Knapp, and Anthony Munoz in the 4x4. Wrestling. After a strong placing in the regional competition this past weekend, Hills Wrestling has a strong six athletes who have earned a shot at individual state tournament titles in Atlantic City this coming weekend. Matthew Lehman, John Sees, Jack Ozeback, Mo Solomon, Ashton Fava, and Joe Lucarello. Boys and girls swimming. Both boys and girls swimming had strong seasons with state meets hosted at home. The girls' team moved through an undefeated regular season and two state tournament meets. Boys and girls fencing. With the squads tournament still ahead, the individual and team meets proved both strong finishes for the boys and girls fencing teams. Passaic County champs Artem T. brought home the gold in the EP, and Isabella Hatzoglu earning the gold in foil for the girls. The girls' team also won the Passaic County Championship. Skiing. The 2022 Wayne Hills ski season was also one of great successes with both boys and girls' teams earning runs in the state races last week. Bowling. The Wayne Hills bowling team finished up with the state individual tournament this past week. Zach Jordan coming in 13 overall, and Erica Cosidi 18 for the girls. Earlier this month, Kaitlyn Davies was recognized as a New Jersey Women and Girls in Sports recipient. Kaitlyn is committed to University of Florida for lacrosse. Wayne Knights Ice Hockey. County Championships. The Wayne Knights beat PCTI for the Passaic County title and are hosting the first rounds of the state tournament this Thursday here in Wayne. Thank you.
The National Honor Society is once again conducting its Kids Helping Kids program that takes place weekly at the Wayne Public Library. With this longstanding program, the NHS students offer extra help and tutoring to elementary, middle, and high school students. This summer, this spring season, Wayne Valley will start a girls' flag football team funded by the New York Jets. Seniors Nick Perata, Alexis Jassen, Sophia Neri, Juliana Vivino, Haley Cabanas, Jaden Sharon, and Colin Schmitz have all signed their commitments to continue their academic and athletic careers. The boys varsity basketball team has had an amazing season so far with a 16-4 record, and are now moving into the semifinals of the counties after an exciting 33-29 victory over Wayne Hills in their quarterfinals. The girls varsity basketball team has had a fantastic season so far with a 17-3 record and are moving on to the semifinals of the counties after a 69-24 victory over Pompton Lakes in their quarterfinals. Good luck, girls. Boys ice hockey is currently standing at a 12-7-3, and their next game is Wednesday at Randolph. Key players at this team are Wayne Hills seniors Ben Friedman and Luke Holbert and Wayne Valley senior George Thurber. Girls and boys swim teams have had a fantastic performance at states as the boys defeated Mount Olive in the first round. The girls 200 free relay swim team, which consists of swimmers Emily Venezuela, Sarah Rodriguez, and Jenny Murky, and Grace Wiener, broke another school record with a time of 1 minute and 44 seconds. Freshman swimmer Sarah Rodriguez recently was named the North Jersey's Female Athlete of This Week after breaking the schools and Passaic County's record in the 100-meter backstroke with an incredible time of 55 seconds. Girls fencing improved to 9-3 as the season defeating both Bergen Tech and Holy Angels. Boys fencing had a great 14-13 win over Don Bosco to improve to 8-4 on their season record. The team has many key fencers on their team, such as senior Gianluca Russo with a record of 20-9. He has had a tremendous season so far. Wrestling won their seventh match of the season and will be wrestling Morris Hills Monday in the first round of the Team States at Northern Highlands. Congratulations to Alita Valli One, who won the county title for the 132-weight class. Adam Januk and Robbie Chiketti also placed third, and Nick Brown fourth in their respective weight classes. Congratulations to the boys and girls indoor track teams in qualifying for the Group Three round and state championship next weekend. The girls ski racing team qualified for the state tournament and will be competing this Friday. Best of luck. Competitive cheerleading has had outstanding performance last Sunday at their competition, and they have placed first in all their competitions so far. This year, the team has a new addition, Dylan Scardilli, which brought them back into their coed division. The team has been showcasing their elite tumbling stunts, which has brought them great success in all their competitions. Keep up the great work. The dance team has placed second out of 10 teams in their jazz division and third place in their palm division at their last event. The team is led by seniors Victoria Palo and Aparna Giant. Keep up the good work, girls. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have the donations, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the FIS Foundation donated $1,500 to the Preakness Early Childhood Center, and this donation is to be used for the school's playground. The Wayne Unico donated $500 to the Preakness Early Childhood Center, and their donation is also for their school playground. The Worth Group donated $1,500 to the Preakness Early Childhood Center for their playground as well. And Eileen Bergen donated $100 to the donation of the George Washington Middle School Library in memorial to Irene Jengis.
The Wayne Education Foundation donated $1,707 to Skyler Colfax Middle School, and the donation is to be used to facilitate creation of TV program for Skyler Colfax students. The Valley Bank donated $1,000 to Wayne Hills High School, and the donation is to support the Wayne Hills Deca Club. The Wayne Hills High School Baseball Booster Club donated $425 to Wayne Hills High School, and the donation is to be used for the Passaic County Championship sign to commemorate varsity baseball championship. The Wayne Education Foundation donated $4,053.99 to Wayne Valley High School, and the donation is to be used for the purchase of three storage cabinets for the theater program.
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Leidig? Revisions to agenda items, please.
The revisions are as followed. Under T Emergent Human Resources, T5, Approval of Appointment of District Staff. Number 4, Revised Start Date from April 27, 2022 to May 4, 2022, or as soon as possible. Add Number 5, Omar Tawhir Senior, FTE1 Custodial Wayne Valley High School, PC 50-41-44/CEL, Salary $46,955. Step 1 of the WCMA Salary Guide, Effective February 28, 2022, or as soon as possible. Replacing Jose Negron, Salary $56,250. Step 7 of the WCMA Salary Guide. Add Number 6, Omar Tawhir, FTE1 Custodial JFK, PC 5004-44/CCI, Salary $46,955. Step 1 of the WCMA Salary Guide, Effective February 28, 2022, or as soon as possible. Replacing Eskendar Bidar, Salary $56,250. Step 7 of the WCMA Salary Guide. T8, Approval of Additional Compensation. Number 8, Delete Daily Rate $386.38. Revised Nightly Rate from $200 to $250. Add T14, Approval of Termination. Recommended Action. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the termination of employee ID #4967, effective March 24, 2022, for just cause. V Emergent School Resource Finance. Number 2, Approval of a Contract Award for Partial Roof Replacement at Ryerson Elementary School. Revised as follows. Recommended Action. Whereas the low bidder for the partial roof replacement at Ryerson Elementary has requested to withdraw its bid, and the Board of Education, based upon the recommendation of the district architect of record and district attorney, accepts this withdrawal, resolves that the Board of Education accepts the withdrawal request of the low bidder. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education awards a contract to the second lowest bidder, Duga Construction LLC, based on the recommendation of the district architect of record, in the total amount of $819,000, inclusive of all project allowances for the partial roof replacement at Ryerson Elementary School. The business administrator/Board Secretary is authorized to execute all appropriate documentation. That concludes the revisions.
Thank you. Okay. All right. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about any employee or any student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. That would be agenda items only. Thank you.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Good evening. My name is Jay Babich. My address is 34 Hillside Avenue, Riverdale, New Jersey, and I'm currently a member of the Transportation Department. Dr. Toback, President Putup, and Board members, I humbly come before you today to apologize for and explain an incident that occurred on a Lafayette Elementary School bus route on February 8. First, let me state that I am one of your bus drivers currently. On that day, I inadvertently left an elementary school student behind at his bus stop. I was a spare driver filling in for an absent driver. I was unfamiliar with the route and was having difficulty finding a house number on Oldham Road. I spotted a girl standing on her front porch, stopped the bus, opened the door, and allowed the girl to board. As I was driving away, the girl said something, but I couldn't understand her through her mask. I asked her to repeat herself, and she said, "You left my brother." I turned the bus around at the first opportunity, saw a man walking a boy across the street. I stopped the bus, allowed the boy to board, exchanged some dialogue with the man, and took all the students on the bus safely to Lafayette. After the run, I drove directly to meet with Transportation Management and explained the situation. I take full responsibility and ownership for what happened on that bus, and I apologize. I didn't see the boy at the stop. I didn't know there were two students assigned to the stop, and I apologize to the Board for that mistake. After reviewing the onboard video, which I believe the Board will see at some time in the near future, after reviewing that with my supervisor, I watched the 10 seconds in pain. Only then did I see the boy, and I apologize to the Board for my mistake. Real life is different from video review, and I'm thankful that nobody was hurt. My union representative told me not to make excuses, and please believe me, all I'm trying to do is explain what happened, not make excuses. I enjoy working as a bus driver for the Wayne Board of Education, and I've performed in that position for 13 years, and have driven for other bus companies since 2003. Although my position is Athletic Driver, I've supported the Transportation Department by working mornings and afternoons with enthusiasm in these difficult times with almost perfect attendance. I thank the Wayne Board of Education for allowing me to address them and hope that I'm allowed to use this as a learning experience as one of your bus drivers moving forward. However, if I've driven my last mile for Wayne Board of Education, let me say that I've enjoyed working for you every day, and I'm grateful that you've given me this career I again take full ownership of the incident and humbly apologize to the Board. Respectfully submitted, Jay Babich. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, seeing no one else rise, I move to close the public portion.
Second. Mr. Fatale. Thank you. Okay. We have several committees that have met, and we're going to give our committee reports, please. Mrs. Kumar.
Today, the Communications Committee met. Dr. Toback, Ms. Wendick, and I were in attendance. We reviewed the recent news articles on the district, and more importantly, we discussed how to present any possible bond proposal in the future and what other bond proposals in our area have been presented. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Baba.
Personnel Committee met tonight with Mrs. Putup and Mr. Prasakos and Paul Clark, who is the Director of HR, Compliance and Labor Relations. We discussed, reviewed the December 16 Personnel Committee Minutes. We reviewed tonight's agenda items. We had one review of an employee placed on the guide. And then we are changing our hiring procedure for long-term replacements, and we're revising our standard operating procedure for that, and that is my report.
Thank you. Oh, Mrs. Kazan, sorry.
If we're going that way.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
The Policy Committee met on Wednesday, February 16 with myself, Paul Clark, HR Director, and Dr. Toback, Superintendent, and Committee members Michael Fatale and Mrs. Wendick. First policy discussed was public participation at board meetings, and there were some legal questions that needed to be researched, and we'll have a draft of that policy available at the next board meeting. The Booster Club Manual, once again discussed, and the committee asked for some changes to be made, and Dr. Toback will put together a presentation and recommendation at a future meeting when that is ready. And we brought up the discussion of the dress code policy and basically landed on the fact that it's not the policy so much that needs to be looked at for equity, but the internal regulations, which again will be up to Dr. Toback to report back on when that's taken care of. And we also handed out the policy for all the members of the process for bylaws and policies, number 0131, so that everyone could be well acquainted with the process. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Pavlak.
Facilities met last Friday. It was myself, Mr. Moffett, Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Fatale, and both Facility Directors and Transportation Director. We discussed all the projects going on around the district, especially with the ESAP. That's the Energy Efficiency Grant that we're using. We finally got rid of the original boilers from Wayne Valley and got new boilers in. We got our money's worth, that I can tell you. We discussed all the upgrades to the security cameras that are going to be in our buildings. Talked about snow removal and how well we were doing. Talked about roof replacements. Obviously, tonight, so we awarded a contract to start moving on roofs that we've been patching for a long time. Now it's time to pay the piper. Talked about vehicles for the Facilities Department, especially that enable us to plow. We had a discussion on the use of facilities policies, and we talked about some general projects also that were happening. Transportation, we talked about the regulations for CDL driver's licenses that the state and federal government have just upped the requirements even further than what they are. But the good news is that our Transportation Department has received the ability now. We are a driver training center, so we can train people here for bus driver licenses. We don't have to send them out. We also talked about electric buses and looking down the road at the future of going green.
Thank you. We also have two retirements to celebrate this evening. Mrs. Kumar.
We would like to congratulate Dawn Pickler on her upcoming retirement from a wonderful career in the Wayne School system. She has been a loyal and dedicated member of Wayne Schools for over 25 years. Dawn's career began at Ryerson Elementary School, where she was beloved and favored substitute for all grade levels. The staff at Ryerson wanted Dawn to be part of the Ryerson family from the beginning and were overjoyed when it officially happened in 1998. It was then that she began teaching first grade. Dawn's classroom was a place where everyone wanted to be. Dawn's gentle voice, warm nature, and genuine smile were always there to greet both students and staff on the good days, and even more importantly, the bad days. Her classroom reflected what Dawn was: bright, cheery, and organized. She naturally was able to maintain a positive environment for learning and growing. Even beyond this, Dawn's impact and contributions exceeded the classroom. She was an active member of Ryerson's PTO, could often be found cheering on her students in their extracurricular activities, and even hand-delivered materials to mailboxes to stay connected throughout the pandemic. We wish Dawn the very best as she embarks on her well-earned retirement and this new chapter in her life. Oh, the places you'll go. Relish this time and make new memories with your husband, three sons, and adorable grandchildren. Enjoy those beach days in Hilton Head and the many road trips to come. No one at Ryerson can say goodbye to a teacher like you, Dawn. You will forever be in the hearts of the Ryerson family. Enjoy your unlimited weekends. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. Mr. Prasakos.
Congratulations to Mrs. Sherri Wittenberg. Mrs. Sherri Wittenberg has been a talented, faithful, speech and language specialist within the Wayne Township Public School District for 25 years. Prior to coming to Wayne, she worked as a speech-language pathologist in New York, Massachusetts, and Ohio. In the last few years, Mrs. Wittenberg has been focused solely on the students at the Randall Carter Elementary Schools. Her impact and compassion on her students' speech and language abilities is immeasurable. She always has a positive disposition. Mrs. Wittenberg has always shown kindness and compassion to all of her students and colleagues. Moreover, she has created relationships to be a resource for all. She is always willing to help all staff, new and seasoned, to develop solutions that benefit students. She was always willing to help and brainstorm ideas that can help our students grow. We've been lucky enough to know and work with Mrs. Wittenberg. She is a wonderful educator and will be greatly missed. Mrs. Wittenberg looks forward to traveling and spending time with her family. All the best in your retirement as you enjoy your new journey.
Thank you. Action on agenda.
Madam President, I'd move the whole agenda items on to consent.
Thank you. Mr. Pavlak, second. Mr. Baba, second. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, Mrs. Lydic, would you like to take a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Kazan.
Needs abstain on emergent T7, number 7, non-certified van aid. Yes to the rest.
Mrs. Kumar.
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak.
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos.
Yes.
Mrs. Wendick.
Yes.
Mr. Baba.
Yes.
Mr. Fatale.
Yes.
Mrs. Putup.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment, excuse me, on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to this evening or at a subsequent meeting under Old Business. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Mrs. Kazan, Mrs. Kumar.
Nicholas Stellianesis, I don't think anyone knows me yet, but I'm just kidding. But I wanted to bring up the class trip. I talked to a few of the members before the meeting, possibly doing a dinner cruise in the Hudson Harbor, because we would usually have a DC trip and a school dance, but since neither of those seem to hap-- well, neither of those are going to happen, I was thinking of having a school trip slash eighth-grade party for everyone on the dinner cruise. That's what I was thinking. I wanted the whole Board to get the input, not just a few members, that we could do the, I don't even know what they would, the eighth-grade dance, that's what they used to call it. The eighth-grade dance, combine that with a trip and do it on a dinner cruise in the Hudson Harbor. That was an idea that I did with Mr. Pavlak, and I talked to a few of you. I just wanted to give an input to see if that might be a good idea to do something, so it's not forgotten here. Thank you.
Just leave it. It's okay. All right.
Madam President, seeing no one else. Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I just have one question, and I was just hoping to find this information somewhere if there's a breakdown.
Yeah, name, address.
For anyone who doesn't know me, Brittany Quarrel. I would just love a breakdown of the COVID funds that were received to the township, 7.4 million, whatever the number was, if there is a breakdown available, to see how they were spent, and if I could be pointed to that. Thank you.
Madam President, seeing no one else rise, I'd move to close the public portion.
Second.
Vote. Mr. Baba. Okay. We don't have to vote. Okay.
Would you like me to respond to the public comment?
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, so just very quickly, Nicholas, your idea about having a dinner cruise is a wonderful idea. The, I guess the main point here is, as a student leader at your school, you should bring that up with the building principal. Have you talked to him? Have you talked to him? So, the principals of the middle schools are the ones that would be the people that would plan the trip, in addition to you have an eighth-grade advisor. So they're the ones, so the process would involve a proposal from the school, and I know the middle school principals have been talking about it, that would come to the Board of Ed, and so the Board of Ed would then get involved, so they don't get involved at the planning stages of the eighth-grade trip, okay? Yeah, no, it's fine. It's fine. It's just, like I'm saying, I'm just saying, it's probably, that's a very good idea. It sounds like a lot of fun, and you should definitely talk about that with Mr. Almbach. As far as the COVID funds, so there's a question about that. The usage of COVID funds was reported to the Board of Ed during the retreat, I believe. That's something you received an update on from Mr. Moffett. The district is putting together a document. We're putting together a report for the entire community that will show exactly how the funds were expended, so that way there's no questions. So we're working on that. Should take us maybe a week or two, but then we will have a full explanation of how the funds were expended, what areas they were used for. Overwhelmingly, the funds were used to support educational programs and to keep students in school, provide additional remediation, and to keep our schools open. That's also a very expensive undertaking, keeping schools open during a pandemic is far more expensive than what it is just running schools regularly.
Thank you. Okay. Board members? Mrs. Kazan.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, first and foremost, I want to thank our teachers, not just the ones, oh, you can't hear me. First and foremost, I want to thank our teachers.
First and foremost, I want to thank our teachers and not just the ones who received the Governor's Educator of the Year Award. They've had a very tough time, most of them teaching extra periods to keep our schools open during this pandemic, as well as dealing with their own personal issues, members of their family, quarantining. It's been a tough couple of years, actually. So I just want to congratulate them and thank them, and, number two, I want to thank all of the donors that we heard about tonight, the members of our community, the organizations that supplement the school budget with their wonderful contributions to our students. And finally, we need bus drivers. So now that we can train them locally, and we even have a supplemental cost program, so if anyone knows anyone who's looking for a good-paying job with benefits, by all means, put the word out and have them contact our Transportation Department. Thank you.
Mrs. Kumar?
I also wanted to say congratulations to all of our teachers. Obviously, the teachers tonight have gone above and beyond, but it's been a very rough year of covering classes in addition to the previous year, so that's first and foremost. And it was really, really nice to hear tonight that sports and other activities are really back in full swing at the high school, and I do want to congratulate our students for all of their achievements, because there was definitely a lot tonight.
Mr. Prasakos?
I just wanted to echo those statements. Congratulations to the staff for their recognition. I believe recognition is important. Congratulations to the Wayne Valley and the Wayne Hills students for their achievements. You know, acknowledging hard work, I believe, is very important and a good motivator.
Thank you. I'm just going to say ditto rather than, I mean, kudos to all our staff members, and especially to those that were honored this evening. We want to thank you very much for your service. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baba.
Second.
Second, Mr. Pavlak. Thank you. Have a very good evening. Thanks.